As always, there is an American flag in both the front and the back of the change, so please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with equal custody and justice for all.
Ms. Parker, would you take your roll, please?
Atchison.
Here.
Byrd.
Here.
DeCambre.
Here.
Demott.
Here.
Pinter.
Here.
Sykes.
Scully.
Here.
Okay, welcome everyone. First item on the agenda tonight is the considerations of the preceding meeting of November the 27th. Ms. Pinter.
Yes, I move that the city council approve the minutes of the November 27th, 2017 meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. There are no presentations tonight, and going into citizen communication, let me explain a little bit different tonight. If you are here and you have citizen comments on anything other than the Bradburn Village, which is item 10C, we will go ahead and take your comments now. If you're here to offer public comment on item 10C, which is the Bradburn Realignment Project, we will hold your comments still as citizen comments until we get to that So you will still get the same five minutes there, we're just going to try to make sure we keep it all condensed into one area for that particular item. The other item that we will be changing the sequence on is we will be doing item 10D ahead of item 10C, so we can have plenty of time if there's comments that we need to discuss and further items for 10C. Next item on the agenda will be those who wish. I have two people signed up so far. Ms. Cowan, are you up today? Have you signed up? You're up first, sir. While you're getting ready, sir, just to remind everyone, in case you haven't been up, as soon as you've identified yourself, the green light will come on to identify the start of your five-minute period. When you have one minute left, the yellow light will come on at the end of your five-minute period, we'll ask you to stop. That will be the signature of the red light. That doesn't mean you have to take all five, but they're there for you to use. Sir, go ahead.
Thank you. I, first of all, there's a good news and a bad news. Well, the good news is, I looked around the tower here, and they have a nice Christmas decoration, and you were inclusive, that you included those people who believe in God and religion, because there is a setup for Christmas. The other thing is, I have some questions for the city council, and I will give you the printout on this one, so if you could not understand my terrible accent, you could read it from the paper. Number one question, do the new members of the city council have or had an oath to the Constitution that they would follow it? Isn't that the Constitution assures our rights to life, liberty, and property? Is that so outdated? Why? Number two, don't you think that we have a chaos in US, United States, judges making the laws at courtrooms, local governments totally disregard legal direction on immigration and other selected issues? People unchecked for criminal background are committing crimes, thus there is a public safety, there is no public safety? Is that not the job of the city council to protect peoples against crimes and promote safety? Number three, would election be more fair by having at my district and not at large? Is a large election, a large election, more local or more centrally, more centralized and union-controlled? Number four, why we use a lot of money for transit system? Would the free enterprise take care of this if it would be so much needed and profitable? We know at by now that any project by government would cost a lot of money. Number five, that's the last one, why officials use new speak words like inclusiveness, diversity, affordable, quality, meaningful, et cetera, many times with opposite meanings? It is like a selective inclusiveness, selective, I mean. Diversity is more division called less warfare? Affordable by whom? Why and how? Like with others people's money? What quality old people would not have at and could die meaningful for elite people? Meaningful means for whom? Might be for elite people. These are give you all my printout, and I hope, oh, by the way, I give you also a Constitution for you, for little meditating on it.
Thank you, Mayor Atchison, and members of the city council. Just a short report on a few things. First of all, there is no post-meeting tonight. It is published in the agenda that we would have a post-meeting if there were agenda items, and there are no post items tonight. Next week, we have a study session on December 18th. It'll be held in the study session room here just off the council chambers, a whole number of items there, I won't run through those, those are available on the web. I want to mention a couple, three things that have happened in the city just in the last month or so that we ought to be really proud of, are going to save the taxpayers' money and give us a chance to deliver services in a more extensive way than previously. The city of Westminster Park Recreation Library Department has been selected by the National Recreation and Parks Association as a pilot site for the physical activity referral program. That's a program under prescription for health. It's a partnership with the medical community that helps provide enhanced medical services to folks who have those kinds of needs. We are one site in the country that has been selected to receive some funding to advance that program. Also in that department, our aquatics program, which teaches children to swim, a really important service of the community, so that when people grow up to be adults in the city, they know how to swim safely and can enjoy not only recreationally, but also save their own lives in the event that they're in water that is taller than them. A couple of years ago, the Park Recreation Libraries Department changed the instructional program to a new program that has been touted really throughout the country, and just recently, after a couple, three years of executing that new program, which provides a really enhanced teaching of swimming, the city has received a five-star level rating, which is the highest rating available anywhere in the country. So if you've got children or grandchildren that learn, that are needing to learn how to swim, we've got a program that I think is better than most. In the police department, I don't, I won't normally mention all retirements, but we had a pretty significant retirement this last week. Mike Kressman retired after 40 years of service. Mike is a deputy chief in the department. I was honored to be involved in an event that where Mike was recognized. He has an absolutely extraordinarily distinguished length of service. It's not unusual that people work for the city for 40 years, first off, there are a lot of people who come through these chambers, get recognized, but Mike being in police service has quite a history, and I want to thank Chief Carlson and the Westminster Police Department and all the attendees for their participation in that. I want to also mention that under Chief Carlson's leadership and the assistance of the Public Safety Group that supports our police department, a wall of honor has been created over at the police, and I'd like to encourage you, councilwoman, to take a look at that. It's quite a history of all the different awards and honors that we bestowed in the police department. This week, we have luncheons. We have a luncheon on Thursday with Jeffco city managers, and on Friday, we'll be hosting the Adams County Mayor's Executive Committee Breakfast on Friday morning. That's something you've asked us to do in terms of reaching out council members with our political constituencies, constituencies on the Adco and the Jeffco side, and we'll be hosting meetings or attending meetings also this week. And finally, I'd like to, I'd like to ask a couple of staff members to comment. Chief Hall, would you come to the microphone and just describe for the public here, because I know the council knows about it, but what's happened with fire ratings in Westminster and the impact that's going to have on our city?
Thank you, Don. Mayor and council, I am pleased to announce that a couple of weeks ago, the city was notified by the Insurance Services Office, commonly referred to as ISO, that the city has been reevaluated and now carries a designation of a one with regard to ISO writing, rating. We were previously a three, and that's on a scale of one to 10, with 10 being on the lower end and one being the best, the top. And we went through the evaluation. ISO comes into communities about every 10 years, and they just sort of tell you, hey, we're coming and we'll be there soon, we hope you're ready. And they showed up early in the summer, did their evaluation, and then we were subsequently notified of being designated one. The important thing here is that oftentimes, the fire department gets the accolades for this. Quite frankly, it's not about the fire department. The ISO evaluation process is a rating system that is used by insurance underwriters to set insurance rates for commercial and residential properties from a fire insurance standpoint. And while a lot of local insurance officers, managers, and that type of thing, they're aware of it, they're not as in-depthly knowledgeable about it as your insurance underwriter. So we're looking to work with some of our underwriter connections to see what possible impact that may have on some of our residential properties and our commercial properties. What we're being told by the ISO people is, is we're likely to see a greater benefit for our commercial properties than we will residential. But we're going to look into that and follow up with you with an informational staff report. Now, again, this is not about the fire department. The rating system evaluates a lot of the systems in the fire department, but it also puts the spotlight on our Public Works and Utilities Department, and it also puts a direct spotlight on our emergency communication center, the 911 dispatch center, and then there's the ancillary support services that come out of community development and economic development and some of our systems designs. The interesting and the most informative part of this process was the fact that we were able to achieve going from a three to a one without any additional funding, without any special programming. It was achieved simply by us showing up every day and doing what we do, which is to deliver exceptional value and services to our community. So we'll follow up in the near future with an informational staff report with a lot more information, but I appreciate the time. Thank you. And I guess I should offer the opportunity for any questions. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Chief Hall. And finally, every other year, we ask the citizens in our city and half for about 20 years, 20 times for 40 years or so, I think it is, that we've asked citizens to tell them, tell us what they think about the services that are being delivered in the city. We're going to do that again this year, and Chris Lindsay's in charge of that project, and he's got a request of you councilors related to the questions for this year's survey. Most of the questions are questions that we hold over year to year, which gives us an ability to compare ourselves against other cities in the front range and other cities actually across the country, but we do reserve a couple, three questions every other year when we do this that are related to topics that you may have particular interest in, and I think Chris wants to ask you for some feedback thereof.
Thank you, Don. Good evening, everyone. So staff is close to having a firm selected for the citizen survey we're going to perform in 2018, and we're really looking to improve the survey this time around to get some more valuable information and more actionable information out of the citizen survey. So we're looking for you to tell us what topics you wish to explore in the citizen survey. As Don mentioned, there's a number of items that we keep in the survey every other year. There's about five pages of the survey, that's the max that we want to do to keep people interested in filling out the survey, so it's not too lengthy. So we have a number of questions that are fixed to provide feedback on services, we get demographics out of the survey, and all of that provides some trend data and performance analysis for us. So I say that just to tell you that the space is limited with the questions that we can ask. What we're looking for is for you to send us topical areas, and the areas really that you're looking to learn about with the city. After this meeting, I will send you out the 2016 survey, so you can have a look at that and the questions that we used the last time around, but if you could please provide us responses by Sunday evening, we can compile those, and we're going to meet with the survey provider Monday. Staff will. We'll also be back with you in January with the draft survey, and we'll review it at that time, and then get it out the mail, get it turned around, and go to work. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. And I just add for the citizens that previous year's surveys that are really interesting information, interesting if you're interested in what people think about the city of Westminster and its future and the kind of services provided, so very interesting to all of us, is on our website, and if you want help in getting and navigating to get there, any of us will help you do that, but it's really great information, there's great historical measurement there to show how we're trending with surveys that are done in the past, and that's all I have this evening. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Don. Council, any follow-up or comments? Mr. Demott?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Each year, our police department partners with KYGO for the Christmas Crusade for children that helps bring presents to kids who might not otherwise have presents.
So, anyhow, KYGO's Christmas Crusade brings presents to kids who don't otherwise have a Christmas. So Westminster has a generous community routinely sponsors 150 kids right here in our city, but there's still great need throughout the Denver metro area. There are over 600 kids that have been nominated by local law enforcement, first responders, as well as school officials, that they're trying to partner with sponsors in order to get them presents so they can have a good Christmas. If you want to be one of those generous sponsors, you can contact KYGO at 303-220-9784, or visit the KYGO website. I know that through this Thursday, there are volunteers from our Westminster Citizen Police Academy Alumni Association that are helping work the phones from eight to five through Thursday. I know my wife and daughter were there this morning answering calls, trying to partner people up with kids who might work with them to provide a better Christmas, so I quite appreciate you thinking about supporting that.
Ms. Sykes.
I actually had a follow-up question for the Chris Lindsay's comments. I just wanted to make sure that everyone in the audience was aware that even when council requests questions, the firm that we hire makes sure that there's no way the questions are biased, and so solicit the response that we desire. So can you go into that process a little bit, or I guess assure our community members that this is done in a way that makes the answers statistically relevant and as objective as?
Yes, ma'am. So, we're really looking for topical areas, that's why I didn't ask you for questions themselves, but if you could provide us topical areas, and then we're going to work with the firm that we select and staff to come up with questions that will get those scientifically valid responses. So we're working with a firm that provides scientifically valid surveys, they hit a target number of people and target number of demographics to make sure we reach that number and we get as many responses as possible, and they have the expertise in writing the questions, not necessarily us, so we would really like, really like those topical areas, and we'll go back and work to make sure there's no bias in the way we ask the questions.
Wonderful, thank you.
Other comments from council?
Let's finish.
Ms. Sykes?
I just wanted to say thank you to all of the Westminster staff that helped have such a wonderful lighting ceremony here, not this last weekend, but the weekend before. I know many a heart was warmed and many a child had a happy, happy evening, so thank you for all the work. It looks absolutely beautiful outside. I know my family enjoyed it, as did many of my colleagues' families, so.
Okay, if there are no other comments, we'll move on. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, this is a group of items that can be taken care of with a single motion. The council has reviewed the consent agenda, no one has asked any item to be removed, so at this time, I will hold for a motion for adoption of the consent agenda. Ms. DeCambre.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that this city council adopt the consent agenda, items 8A through H8H.
Ms. Pinter.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please use your button as soon as we can get there. Okay, go ahead. And the motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Next item up is Resolution Number 29 regarding these legislative policy. Ms. Byrd?
Yes, I move to adopt Resolution Number 29 establishing the city of Westminster's 2018 legislative policy statement as amended in the pre-meeting and lobbying protocols.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Pinter. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by any member of the council? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Yes.
Byrd.
Yes.
DeCambre.
Yes.
Demott.
Yes.
Pinter.
Yes.
Sykes.
Yes.
Scully.
Yes.
Atchison.
Yes. Motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Ms. Parker?
Byrd.
Yes.
DeCambre.
Yes.
Demott.
Yes.
Pinter.
Yes.
Sykes.
Yes.
Scully.
Yes.
Atchison.
Yes. Motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Next item up will be item 10D, Semper Water Treatment. Ms. Sykes?
I moved, based on the recommendation of the city manager, to determine that the public interest will best, be best served by authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with HDR Engineering, Inc., in the amount of $263,691 for preliminary design for the Semper Water Treatment Facility High Service Pump Station Repairs and Reliability Improvements Project, plus a contingency of $50,000 for a total authorized expenditure of $313,691.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. There was a minor amendment to that, is that correct, Mr. Andrews? Do you want to explain that?
Yeah, just minor wording adjustments in the, in the first four or five words doesn't change the content of the recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Any questions by council on this one? Seeing none, this is a vote with your button, please. Okay. Motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Go back now to item 10C, this is a Bradburn Boulevard realignment project calculation, or cancellation, sorry. At this time, I would entertain a motion in order to open this item up. Ms. Byrd?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Community Development Block Grant Change of Use for 7225 Bradburn Boulevard from the Bradburn Boulevard Realignment Project to a project in support of low to moderate income affordable housing.
Okay, I have a second for the motion, Ms. DeCambre.
Second.
Okay. This time, I'm going to turn it to the staff for the presentation that they're preparing. Ladies, are you guys ready? Okay. Mr. Hall?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're here tonight to present a proposed Department of Housing and Urban Development Change of Use for the property at 7225 Bradburn Boulevard. I'd like to begin by clarifying for everyone that this is not a city land use process. This is a public hearing that's part of the HUD process for evaluating the use of Community Development Block Grant funds. At issue is a change from a project known as the Bradburn Boulevard Realignment to one that provides affordable housing. Staff has prepared an extensive and detailed memo that was provided at a study session on December 4th, that was also posted online, and as council will recall, no discussion took place at that meeting, rather, a list of questions was compiled, and staff prepared written responses that have been included in the public packets for tonight. We're going to provide a comprehensive but a fairly high-level presentation, and of course, will be available for questions afterward. Before I turn this over to staff, again, I'd like to emphasize that tonight's hearing for the Department of Housing and Urban Development is a separate and distinct process from the city land use process. Should council approve the change of use, there would be additional public meetings and notices associated with zoning and the city's comprehensive plan. So with that, I'd like to turn this over to Jenny Grafton, Senior Economic Development Officer, and Heather Ruddy, the city's CDBG Program Planner.
Thank you, John, Mayor and members of council. So the purpose of tonight's hearing is really to consider three items. There's the change of use under the HUD terms, to take this from the Bradburn Boulevard Realignment Project to one providing support for affordable housing. Second item is the reallocation of budget to repay HUD, Department of Housing and Urban Development, and third is the actual authorization to make that repayment. So these are all processes that are associated with the use of federal funds in the Community Development Block Grant Program. As John articulated, this is not a city land use decision at this time. Should council decide to move forward with the approval of this change of use, that would then enable further public processes associated with zoning and changes to the comprehensive plan. So in order to evaluate those three items, we will just briefly
So the purpose of tonight's hearing is really to consider three items. There's the change of use under the HUD terms to take this from the Bradburn Boulevard Realignment Project to one providing support for affordable housing. Second item is the reallocation of budget to repay HUD, Department of Housing and Urban Development. And third is the actual authorization to make that repayment. So these are all processes that are associated with the use of federal funds in the Community Development Block Grant Program. As John articulated, this is not a city land use decision at this time. Should council decide to move forward with the approval of this change of use, that would then enable further public processes associated with zoning and changes to the comprehensive plan. So in order to evaluate those three items, we will just briefly review the content of the memo. We have an outline that sort of parallels that to help you follow along. We have additional city staff here tonight that can provide more detailed answers to questions. We have Police Chief Tim Carlson, Fire Chief Doug Hall, Community Development Staff represented by Dave Losman, Parks, Rec and Library Staff represented by Nicole Ankeny, and then Chris Lindsay as Policy and Budget Manager. I also want to take a moment to acknowledge Heather Ruddy, our CDBG Program Manager, who has really done the lion's share of the work on this project. And as we get into questions that are more detailed on HUD requirements, CDBG restrictions, the background on this project, I'll defer to her expertise on that. So now, let's begin just by getting everyone oriented to the site. So the map in front of you, if you notice the red boundaries, that is the property of 7225 Bradburn Boulevard. Bradburn Boulevard itself is to the east, 72nd Avenue runs on the south, just to the north are the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad tracks, and then the blue line to the south has the Little Dry Creek Drainage. So again, I want to just make this easy to follow along. We'll follow an outline that's very similar to your memo if you want to refer to that. It's far more detailed, and there may be questions that we want to clarify at the end. But we're briefly going to go over what this process really looks like, what the recommended actions are for council this evening, a little bit of the project history, not the whole property history, but just the Bradburn Realignment component, the HUD process where we were flagged and have violations, and what we're doing to work with them to propose alternatives. Also, a term that gets thrown around a lot is national objectives when CDBG funds are used, so I want to take a moment to articulate what those are. The alternative uses, we'll go through both what we have looked at as alternative uses for the site, as well as what council's alternative actions might be. We'll talk about what a proposed change of use looks like and the environmental assessment that goes with that. This is a little bit different than environmental assessments you might see on other properties. It's not a Phase 1 environmental, which is fairly common in land development. This is a HUD prescribed process. We'll also talk to you about the public process that was associated up to this point and our ongoing efforts. And finally, we'll wrap up with the details on the reallocation of funding. So at the study session last week, when we took questions from council and provided responses, one of the questions that came up was to have a better understanding of what the surrounding land uses look like. So staff prepared this map, just as a quick point of reference, shows the residential properties and the surrounding businesses. Again, since we're not doing a zoning change tonight or a comp plan amendment, this is really just for reference, we are going to talk about the HUD change of use and go into more detail on that. So the recommended council actions from staff would be to approve the CDBG change of use from the Bradburn Boulevard Realignment to this project supporting affordable housing, approve the reallocation of the budget, and this is something that if there are more questions, I know that Chris Lindsay is happy to explain how that process works, but it is really transferring funds that were going to be utilized for WIDA that are not needed and to draw upon those to repay this. And the amount that we're looking at repaying at this point is $245,460. Those are CDBG funds that went into this project associated with the realignment that if we changed the use are no longer eligible and would need to be returned. So to go back on the project history just briefly, the two images you see here in front of you are the rough realignment diagram. Notice on the left, there's the same red boundary, that's the 7225 limits. To the right, you can see that in order to complete the actual construction, additional property acquisition would be needed. So this is most significant on the property to the south. The property is owned by Mary Feltes, and while we haven't had any recent conversations with her, when asked previously, she was not interested in selling her property for the project. It's important because when CDBG funds are used, eminent domain cannot be exercised. So this would have to be a voluntary sale for that to be completed. A little bit of history on how this project was framed initially. So it was stated to correct an unsafe intersection. And I want to spend a little bit of time explaining that because the safety was not based on accident data. It was based on the fact that this was an older intersection design, which is very common in that part of the city. And the thought was that if we could bring it up to current engineering standards, this was an improvement. It would be to form a four-way intersection, taking that Bradburn and realigning it with Raleigh Street, and you'd have 90-degree turns, and it would be signalized. Over the course of a four-year period, 2010 to 2013, city staff used CDBG funds, just under $700,000, to acquire the land, complete designs for the roadway realignment, the plans and the studies associated with that, and also to relocate two businesses that were formerly at 7225 Bradburn. The additional funds that were going to be needed to complete the roadway realignment project were never part of an approved budget. That amount has changed somewhat over time. The most recent budget that we had, or estimate, rather, was just over 2.2 million. So if we were going to pursue this project, we would need to come up with those additional funds. Also want to mention the community outreach and support that was done previously. Every four years, or five years? Five years. CDBG goes through a consolidated planning process. This is also prescribed by HUD. In that, it was not, the safety of this intersection, the priority of this project was not supported. The majority of citizens involved in that did not give it high priority. Also reflective of this, the 2016 citizen survey, which is something that was just spoken about previously, showed that the number-one concern in this area was actually about the affordability of housing, concern about rising costs. The connection and integration with the England Park Corridor has been an important part of the conversation. Those elements have been further studied by Parks, Rec and Libraries, and other alternatives have been developed that are different than what was originally anticipated with the Bradburn Realignment, but actually do a better job of providing access and serving the community needs with a lower impact to the surrounding property owners. And again, just to reiterate that the accident data, we did ask engineering staff as well as public safety to take a look at that and confirm that there in fact are not a high number of accidents here. We can go into more detail in questions if needed. So because HUD processes are not something that we talk about very frequently in here, just want to go through a little bit of how this works, and Heather will certainly be able to answer more detailed questions. But whenever federal funds are expended, there's a time limit that's associated with them. In this case, we were flagged in July of 2016 as this project being pending at risk because there was no activity on it. In September of that year, Heather actually worked to do a remediation plan with HUD. What were we going to do to move activity forward on this site? And a workout strategy was begun. This past August, we had three days where our local field representative was here, went through all of the records on this property, and this was voluntary. We actually worked very closely with them to make sure that all the information was reviewed thoroughly, to identify which expenditures in there were ineligible. That was how the $245,460 was identified. That was in part some things that were billed incorrectly to the CDBG account, others were because they were associated specifically with the realignment. If we changed the use, then they're no longer eligible. Those funds, when repaid however, don't go away. They're returned into our line of credit, so they can then be used for the change of use. There is also an additional $447,805 that would be reprogrammed under this. So those are funds going back into a new project. All right, as promised, the national objectives. So every CDBG funding activity has to qualify under their rules. The three objectives that we can meet, benefiting low and moderate income persons, or preventing or eliminating slums or blight, or the third one, meeting other community development needs, having a particular urgency. This one in particular is something we rarely utilize. This is typically associated with disaster relief funds. It's almost always with a natural disaster. The criteria are established by HUD. We don't get to interpret them. So, as we evaluate the site at a staff level, we have to look at those national objectives. The only one that 7225 Bradburn Boulevard development really qualifies under is benefiting low to moderate income individuals. And Heather can certainly explain if there are questions that was detailed with an attachment to your memo. We're glad to answer questions on that. So in identifying how we might serve low to moderate income individuals, we looked at a number of possible projects for that site. We looked at recreation programming, we looked at park, we looked at police substation, we looked at coffee shop, a number of options that had been thrown out there. And while those are all wonderful projects, there are a lot of limitations that go with the CDBG funds that make them very hard to execute. And that's what's outlined in your memo. They are restricted to serve those low to moderate income individuals. So you can imagine how something like a police substation, if it's only restricted to serving certain people, becomes a very difficult thing to operate and monitor. When we then entertained the possibility of an affordable housing project to serve low to moderate income individuals, this was important because it not only met a national objective, it was the one that also served a city council or city strategic plan goal. We felt that one had the greatest potential. The other reason we felt that that was an appropriate staff recommendation to make is that it would not require additional funds from the city to go into the project. It would set it up for private investment to come in and stabilize the area. So the potential city alternatives, for those of you here tonight to consider, we could proceed with the alignment of Bradburn Boulevard as planned, but those have impacts to the budget, as previously discussed, a minimum of 2.2 million. There's also impact to those adjacent landowners. Second option would just be to identify a new project that meets a HUD national objective, but we have significant time constraints imposed with that. We would need to have another project ready to go within six months or risk losing those funds. Third would be to cancel the project and repay the entire amount to HUD. That amount comes to $693,265. Fourth alternative is to approve the change of use as proposed by staff, which reduces the burden that we have to repay to HUD. A few photos, just for reference, of what the property currently looks like. There are two buildings on that site. They have been scheduled for demolition as they were part of the roadway realignment. However, in order to do a demolition, one of the steps that has to be completed is an environmental assessment. So in articulating what a change of use might look like for those, the CDBG funds have to be used to serve individuals at or below 80% of the area median income. I know we've spent some time going over that relative to other projects. That roughly means $67,000 a year for a household of four individuals. In assessing the site, whether or not we could serve that, we needed to look at what a reasonable number of homes might be. In that environmental assessment, I found that it was a viable site for up to four single-family homes that could meet the national objective and the city strategic plan goal. The environmental assessment that was done was necessary in order to determine if that was viable. And I wanted to come back and touch on that briefly because there's been some confusion that we had already gotten further along with a development proposal. That in fact is not the case. The only way for the environmental assessment to be done is to say, this is the use that we're proposing, could that work? We did that process with Miniello Consulting. We hired them in June. Kristi Miniello followed all the HUD procedures, found that no significant impact was found to doing residential at this location, but that routine noise mitigation measures would be needed. And this was due to the proximity to the railroad track, based on current conditions. Council may be aware that there are quiet zones being proposed for this area, actually a series of four, but they will not be completed in time for us to do this. So the assessment is based on current conditions, and the noise mitigation measures include such things as a sound wall, routine construction practices that include multiple-pane, triple- pane windows, dampers to ventilation ducts, things so that the noise does not come into the residence. But again, this is just a step in evaluating the site, not a final decision on how it might be used. The noise mitigation measures would require that we not build a residential project in a certain part of the property, and that's what's shown here for you. We did do a layout to make sure that four units would reasonably fit and have appropriate access, be able to be served by utilities. And the process that was used in this, there were two Community Development Block Grant meetings. They're not specific to this property. It was discussed in the context of larger CDBG activity. Information memos have been provided to council over the course of the last year, just providing updates on where we were in this process. The public postings are associated with HUD procedures and have a prescribed comment period. We did make the decision to go ahead and continue taking additional comments beyond that, just so that council would have the benefit of a larger representation. And then as part of ongoing outreach in the neighborhood, Parks, Rec and Libraries has done a wonderful job working with Westminster High School, the parent and youth advisory groups, as well as the Mung community who oversee a lot of the activity in the community garden. And so this development around the property as it relates to access to the park, access to the community gardens, the trail crossing, something that's been explored in a lot of other meetings and venues as well. The Affordable and Workforce Housing Strategic Plan, which council received in October, also involved community workshops and outreach to this area. Specifically, heard about the concerns from a number of residents about the rising cost of housing, their need for further opportunities to access affordable units. Again, the citywide survey reaffirmed that. And the range of feedback that council has received relative to this, we feel is truly a product of a lot of outreach and a lot of venues to a lot of different populations. And of course, it isn't the end of the outreach. If we do move this forward with council's approval of a change of use, there would be the associated city land use processes that would have their own public requirements. So to do a little explanation here for Chris that he may want to explain better than I do, the reallocation of funds is coming from 2016 carryover associated with WIDA. Because there were higher than anticipated incremental revenues, that money is not needed as it was planned and has been some availability to help us in this situation, there is probably more information than you need to know as far as which account gets moved to which, but it's enabling staff to make that repayment to HUD and relieve us of the violation. So again, I want to leave you briefly, just with the recommended actions for clarity, the three points, the CDBG change of use, the reallocation of the funds, and then the actual repayment. With that, we will open it up to any questions for council to clarify. With that, we will open it up to any questions for council to clarify anything from this or the associated questions and answers or other items in your packet.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any other questions?
Yes, those funds were identified by staff and confirmed by HUD as ineligible expenses that need to be repaid.
So, the property was appraised in 2010, I believe, as a part of the process for acquiring the property, and that was appraised at $375,000 and purchased. That includes the property and the buildings. The properties, the buildings have been prepared for demolition. All services have been turned off. The inside of the buildings are in pretty rough shape. The windows and doors have been boarded up, and we are prepared to demolish them once we receive approval through HUD of the request for lease of funds process. It would take substantial rehabilitation of the buildings to reuse them.
Sure.
City, at what level, police officer, firefighter?
Sure. So, the area median income for this area, we're part of the Denver-Lakewood-Aurora area, is $83,900. CDBG programs cannot serve above 80% AMI, so that puts it at 67,120.
And then, in the staff report, I believe it identified firefighter one and police officer one as falling within that income category, as well as some other administrative functions.
Thank you both for your presentation. It was nicely done, and the agenda memo was really well done also, and covered a lot of the questions we had from last week, so thank you. Some of the questions that I have are going to be, just to flesh out some of those details, because I know many people who are interested in this project might not have had the opportunity to read the memo as thoroughly as members of council might have. So forgive me in advance if the questions seem redundant, but this is just to make sure we've got a full understanding of what we're working with here. So, one of the concerns that I noticed in a lot of the citizen comments that we received was the location or the proximate location, the closeness to the railroad tracks and the noise. So can you talk a little bit more about noise mitigation efforts that are planned and the timing of those?
Well, everything's preliminary. It would be dependent on the type of houses that are built and how they're situated on the site. For HUD, one of the first methods of noise attenuation is site location, where the property is located on the site. The further away from the noise source, the better you are. We've established that building envelope with the noise assessment locations, where we have determined where the buildings must be situated so that they don't fall within an unacceptable range. Second, staff has considered also the building of a noise attenuation structure, a wall. This is preliminary, or a berm, also landscaping. We also, as part of the site layout and in working with PR and all staff, proposed to put the trail access at the northern portion of the property to provide further barrier and buffering from the noise source. And then also Jenny could probably speak to this a little bit better than I do, but there's general building practices that can be used, such as triple-pane windows, insulation, and other methods to actually provide noise mitigation for the units themselves.
Sure. One of the primary things is that a home has to be capable of being heated and cooled without having the windows open if it's in a high-noise area. This happens a lot of times around airports. So it's a very common practice within construction when you're in a high-noise zone to put those measures in place.
And the memo talked about noise mitigation or abatement efforts that addressed outside living space and also inside living space. Can you just speak to that briefly?
Well, for the outside living spaces, we could create, using the wall, a noise wall. Also, you can have enclosed patio spaces and other methods.
Right. In part, the site, the planned siting of how the site would lay out would have backyards, more active recreational spaces to the farthest south part of the property. To come back briefly to the quiet zones, those have actually been budgeted in 2018 and are planned for construction to be completed within 2019. So very likely that the quiet zones would already be in place on or about the time that construction here would occur, but HUD simply didn't allow us to project into the future. It had to be based on what the current conditions were.
Just, can you clarify, what does a quiet zone do?
So as the train goes through, instead of pulling the horn and the signal at those crossings, it's, I actually probably should defer to the engineers to explain it in better detail, but there are other safety mechanisms in place so that that sound is not necessary as a warning.
And then, another concern that was raised was perhaps that adding more affordable housing, these additional four units, might somehow impact crime. And I know your memo touched on this. Can you talk a little bit for the audience's benefit what we think the impact on crime might be of having these four for sale units built on that parcel?
Sure. I think we could speak to the common sense aspect of it. It may be a question better directed to Police Chief Carlson because he's more familiar with the area. I'll ask him if he would join us at the podium. Briefly, though, having clearly an occupied property with residents who are there 24/7 provides additional eyes and safety on a neighborhood.
Chief, if you would, please.
Good evening. You know, as to the question of criminal activity around affordable housing, properties such as this really gets down to what Jenny just said, is people who live on site, who take care of their property, who are paying attention to what's happening around them, who are the eyes and ears for the community, who notify us, it really, it has nothing to do with affordability or not. It's the people who move in, who take care of their property, who are notifying us when there's problems. Now, I don't have any data on this particular property and those kind of things, but that's what I would say, is abandoned properties is places that people don't take care of and aren't there physically present. That increases that potential for crime in a neighborhood. So, that's how I would answer that.
Thank you, Chief. So as a follow-up to that, so would you say that actually having a property actually built there versus right now that it's vacant would probably be better for crime?
Right, and I would agree with Jenny. I think the common sense look at things is when there's nobody there, and it's a property that's either rundown, you know, windows broken and weeds and all that kind of stuff that grow up, that's a natural attraction for criminal activity. So having people on the site, whether it's residential, commercial, retail, having people on the site, people who care for the property and manage the property and watch out for the property, that's a pretty consistent thing we use throughout the city as far as neighborhoods taking care of neighborhoods and neighbors taking care of each other. So, that to me is more important than the cost of the property itself is, are the people in there taking care of that property.
Bird, do you want to continue?
Yes. So, another question that was raised was of concern that this project, if it were to go forward, would depress surrounding property values. And I wonder if you could speak to that as well.
I'll let Heather pull the research on it, but that's a very common concern throughout the country, and a great deal of research has been done to study that effect. There is no supporting evidence that that actually materializes. In fact, there are a number of documented cases where it actually helps because it's providing additional investment and stability to a neighborhood, but it hasn't been borne out by research.
And the vast majority of research does suggest that it actually can improve property values. Trulia did a very recent study of several markets, including the Denver market, that proved that point. And then, there's been a recent review of the literature, literature review of prior research projects that have also proven that affordable housing is more dependent on the quality and the maintenance than the actual price, and that as long as they're maintained. And these, again, are for homeowner occupied houses, for sale units, that will be built to city quality standards, and I'm certain that, you know, homeowners will be maintaining them to the same level as most homeowners in the community to improve the property values.
And can you talk about what we expect the for-sale price to be and how that compares to neighboring homes in the area?
Certainly. So, working backwards from the AMI level and backing out to how HUD defines affordable, which is that a household isn't paying more than 30% of their income towards housing costs. Back that out into what a reasonable monthly payment would be on a 30-year mortgage, I think we use 3.5% as a down payment, that basically gets us to a sale price point of roughly $320,000. That compared against other estimated home values in the neighborhood is right in line. So it would not be significantly different, positive or minus or negative from that.
We actually took a sampling of cost estimates from Zillow.com, which is a known real estate firm, and we found that the homes within that sampling fell, you know, both below that price and just a little bit above that price that we're estimating these units to be.
So then, one last question, and I can't remember, it might have been Counselor Scully who asked this. There was a concern that there had been another nearby property that had been, I guess, repeatedly denied permission to build an apartment on their commercial parcel because of proximity to the railroad, and I wonder, I think you had gone and done some research, if you could speak to that for us?
Sure. So, the property that was put into question was 7239 Bradburn, and they had approached the city with wanting to put an apartment use in a commercial building. And there's nothing in the city zoning ordinances that restrict residential uses based upon proximity to railroad tracks or crossings, and the 7239 Bradburn Boulevard application was not denied by the city on that basis. In actuality, the application was not denied by the city at all, and our file indicates that the application was abandoned by the applicant, apparently as a result of concerns raised by the city regarding the proposed commercial use of the property.
That's all I have for now. Thank you both very much.
Ms. Lee?
Counselor Bird's incredibly thorough, so I have quite a few less questions now. So thank you. I had one point of quick clarification in regards to Counselor Demont's question. He asked specifically how much was ineligible, not just because we had, if we were to reallocate the funds. And it looks to me that it's actually only $39,878 were ineligible costs, and my understanding is the additional 200, and I just don't want people to leave that there were, you know, a quarter of a million dollars of ineligible costs. So am I reading this correctly, or?
So, we have the ineligible costs, which includes the $39,878. That included utility costs, a roof survey that should have been applied to a different property project, planning design costs for Delavilla Park and consulting services. Those are ineligible. The remaining $205,000 are costs that may not be reallocated to any other project other than the roadway realignment. The roadway realignment project was meeting that specific national objective, and unless we do that roadway realignment, we have to repay that remaining $205,000.
Thank you. That was my understanding. I just wanted some clarity on that, so thank you. I'll refrain from my other questions till after we hear public comment.
Other comments or questions from staff or council before we start to go into the public comment? Mr. Cameron, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for all your work putting this together. I also wanted to follow up on some of the questions that I had last week, just for a little bit of clarification. So I had asked, my first question was in relation to CDBG funds being utilized for economic development opportunities and how other cities had utilized them. Could you please expand a little bit on that?
So with the CDBG program, economic development activities are really risky. They're risky because they need to result in job creation for individuals that are low to moderate income. This requires the employer to prove that they are providing those jobs to low and moderate income people. In our experience, working with our colleagues in larger cities such as Denver and Aurora who do partake in these activities because they receive a substantial amount more than we do in CDBG funds, they have had a difficult time in getting compliance from their businesses. The businesses are very reluctant to ask sensitive information of their employees, such as race and ethnicity, as well as their household income status, and those employees likewise are sometimes sensitive in providing that information to employers and to the government.
And just to expand on that a little bit, it's not simply that the individual who would be employed must provide that information, it has to be provided for the entire household. So, that's where it starts to become sensitive, that people who aren't even employed in that industry are now having to give their information over to that employer as well.
And so the risk comes to the city that if we cannot get compliance from the business owner, then we are on the hook for repaying HUD. If we cannot report on the job creation activities in our annual report to HUD, then that is found as a finding, and those funds are subject to recapture by HUD. Our local CPD, our community planning director at HUD, said that HUD headquarters has recently put an emphasis on monitoring for this activity, and he has suggested that as a smaller community receiving a small amount of funds relative to other communities, that this might not be an activity that we are staffed for.
And that's very helpful. Thank you. And then, what kind of projects have they utilized it for?
Other communities?
Yeah.
So, a lot, I use them for loan programs, so they provide a loan to businesses to either do improvements to their facilities, or to buy equipment, or also to expand.
That's very helpful. So, I was trying to look through it. So, did we purchase the property in 2008? Is that the year, or?
How long ago?
What was the exact year?
I think the actual purchase was in 2011.
2011, so it's been then six years that we've been waiting. Can you, I know you touched on this on the report, and I know it has to do with the Raleigh Bridge. Can you walk us through a little bit as to why for the past six years, we've had that, you know, a lot vacant and no activity taking place?
Sure. So, the roadway realignment could not proceed until a Raleigh Bridge replacement was completed. The bridge replacement wasn't completed on time due to a delay in receiving a grant from the state. At the same time, we ran into the Great Recession, and due to that delay, and then the concurrent recessions, the city had to reprioritize their funds. There were some cuts on the operation side and also to the capital improvements that the city had previously considered. The roadway realignment was considered to then- the city had previously considered. The roadway realignment was considered to then become a lower priority project compared to other projects within the city and their needs. And it didn't receive the funding that it had considered a few years in the past. We also had a change in staff during the time and engineering, and current engineering staff reexamined the project and determined that it wasn't a top-rated priority and the intersection did not present significant safety concerns.
Thank you very much. And I don't know if this question's for you, Donna, or do we have other land, or John, in the area that is vacant that is owned by the city in that area?
Yes. So the other property that CDBG funds are involved in, for example, is 73rd and Lowell, which is actually several parcels of land, but it's that southeast corner. The building commonly known as the Penguin Building sits in the middle of the city-owned parcels. So that is another example.
Is that the only land that we own?
The Westminster Housing Authority also owns the Rodeo Market Building. And that's it?
Can I ask a follow-up question about the 73rd and Lowell property? There was something in the packet that will, if, there was a question about revitalizing 73rd Avenue. And with the 73rd and Lowell property coming up, I'm just kind of curious how you think like this will, the two sites will interplay, or do you have any comment on additional work and needs for 73rd Avenue?
John, would you answer that, please?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, counsel. This is the only way we can arrange all of us at the dais tonight. But clearly 73rd and, the 73rd and Lowell property is a gateway to 73rd Avenue. And the Rodeo Market property sits squarely in the middle of 73rd. So those both represent key sites that we want to manage the redevelopment of very carefully to aid in the revitalization and reinvigoration of 73rd Avenue. This site, the subject site, 7225 Bradburn, sits off of 73rd to the south, clearly, and doesn't have as great an impact on economic vitality on 73rd Avenue as those two sites clearly do. Happy to answer follow-up question if you have one.
No, not at this time. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Cameron, are you done?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For me, John, and all, I think it would be very helpful. I would like to request the study session to get an update of what parcels of land do we have in that area that either we own or are at chance, because I think it's been a while. And it would be helpful to know kind of what's the answer. Because it seems to me that it's not just this lot, that there's other areas in that, there's a lot of other land in that area that we need to be thinking about what we're going to be doing.
Okay, listen.
And then?
Let's try to keep our questions on this if we can.
Well, it's on this, you know, it's, I think it kind of relates, you know, I think I can understand why folks are frustrated. And I think it would be helpful to get an update on that. The last thing I wanted to ask is 72nd and Lowell. To me, it was shocking. And I don't know if this is to the chief, to see all the accidents that happened there. You know, I think 95 accidents compared to the other ones. Why do we think this is happening? And like, is there a way of, why? Like, why are we, it's quite a lot of accidents in one intersection? Or do you not think?
Chief, could you have a response?
Glad to get an answer between there and here.
Sorry.
You know, that is a, that is a higher volume at 72nd and Lowell, that's true. I think the volume is higher there because there are two main roadways coming together is the best way to describe it, as opposed to some of these others that don't, they're one, it's either, it's either 72nd or 72nd and Lowell. So it's the volume of traffic that would give us the biggest, biggest reason for the accidents.
Do you think there's anything we could do to help prevent them, or do you think it's just the nature?
Well, I think it's the nature of the volume of, the growing volume of traffic in that, in that area, just like anyplace else. The more volume you get, the more accidents you have. I'd have to come back with you for more definitive answers. That's the best I can do.
That would be helpful. Thank you. Thank you, chief. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Just one clarifying, Jenny, the roadway project cannot go forward without the buy-in of the property owner, because we do not have the use of eminent domain to complete that project as it was previously presented. And that owner, at your last contact with them, was still saying they're not interested. Is that correct?
That's correct. And that, I will say, that contact has not been recent. But that was our last known position.
Okay. Mr. Demont, you had a follow-up question?
I do. Kind of a multiple-part question again. Are we confident that if we changed this, that this project would go through and not fall off as others? And have we, in history, has the city had projects of this nature, the CDBG, that they've had to change?
Heather?
There's been interest by developer in the property. I think the city is very motivated and is, has been motivated by HUD to get this project underway. And this is the first time in my knowledge of the program that we've had a change of use.
Heather, would you clarify that we do have someone who may have been piquing interest, but we don't know for sure that they would still go forward with that even if we make this change. Is that correct?
That's correct. So in order to determine whether or not the site was viable for residential, we reached out to Habitat for Humanity just to, for that purpose. But we have not entertained any negotiations or development proposal from them this time. They're interested in moving forward if we are interested.
Right. And this, also, this is a proposed use right now would be a for-sale product, not a rental project.
Correct. And staff pursued that, knowing the concerns about having greater investment in the area, that for-sale was deemed to be a better fit to achieve that.
Counselor, before I open it up, Ms. Scully, would you go have a question? Go ahead.
I do. And I think that I might be jumping the gun on this question, so I apologize. But if we, if we were to look at the affordable housing aspect and go forward with that part of the plan, what, what are we looking at in timeframe for the development and finishing of that project? Because we've waited a long time for realignment of Bradburn to see it not
Certainly.
come to fruition.
And we do have time restrictions from HUD. So I'll let Heather articulate how that would work.
Well, we have the city process as well, but HUD, there's certain timeframes that have been placed on us by HUD. One of the timeframes is if we, if we don't approve this proposed change of use tonight, then we have to come back to them with a different change of use and have the process completed within six months. That's aside from, from your question. I would say that HUD would probably give us, you know, more than two years to get something with, actually completed and homeowners occupying the home. That is not a definitive timeframe given to them, but knowing how long that they have given us on this project and this workout plan, I anticipate that that would be the timeframe. If the proposed change of use was approved tonight, then we would move into our own city processes and start entertaining interest from developers and choosing a developer to go through that process, through the city's own land use changes.
So currently HUD recognizes all of these steps that we're doing as making progress. And as long as we continue to make progress, they will work with us. If we were to stop, then, then the project is in violation, the property's in violation again.
All right, staff, if you're ready, I'm going to go ahead and open up the comment period for the public. Ms. Bishop, I know you've been kindly waiting, but you'd like to come on forward and you'll have your five minutes. And would you, just for the record, please state your name?
My name is Beverly Bishop, and I reside very near to this area. I live at 4054 West 74th Avenue. And so I'm about a block and a half from this property that's being discussed. And so I, I have a, I think, a vested interest in what happens, because I've lived in this area since 1983. I was a young thing of early 30s when I bought my house at 4054 West 74th. Lived there ever since. And I haven't seen a great, a great amount of change along Bradburn Boulevard. I've walked many generations of dogs by there over the years. And the houses from 74th South to 72nd, there hasn't been a great deal of change. Some of them are starting to look a little worn and shabby and deteriorating. I would like to see some new growth apparent in that area. And I think this is a very good sensible use for this property. So I would, as a resident in that area, and I'm probably going to be one of the few tonight that speaks in favor, I'm just guessing, but I would be in favor of making this change of use as far as making this to affordable housing. I would very much like to see that happen in our neighborhood. There's desperate need for more affordable housing. I don't care how you want to parse it out as numbers-wise, salary-wise, house value-wise, or whatever. People need to have more choices of where they can afford to live, period. And if we've got some vacant land there that can be utilized in that manner, then I think we owe it to our citizens to pursue that. So I am very much in favor of this. I also would like to make a couple of comments on some of the concerns that were raised, particularly by Counselor Byrd, talking about the proximity to railroad tracks. Okay, I'm not much farther away than that property. I've got a big lot. I have about a third of an acre. This parcel, I believe, is about two-thirds of an acre, is what I read somewhere. And granted, I'm a little bit farther away from those railroad tracks, but there's a lot of vacant railroad property between the end of my backyard and railroad tracks. So, yeah, I'm used to trains. And it doesn't bother me at all. Granted, I'm going on my 35th year. I live in there. So, you know, I do, you do get used to it. But I would like to suggest that if that is a real concern, that maybe council members or city staff speak with some of the people that live at, for instance, the group of new houses, which was put in maybe less than half a dozen years ago, 7393 Raleigh is one of the addresses, some tract housing that was put in 4201 to 4299 West 74th. Those are relatively new. And literally, their backyards are right next to, their fences are like right next to the railroad tracks. Now, I think there are the same people living there as when those were first built. And so obviously, the noise from trains going by must not have bothered them a whole lot, because I believe the same people are there. Also, just as close to the railroad tracks, you have the Orchard Crossing Apartments, which have been there some time. You also have another apartment complex at 4160 West 74th. And that probably is a lot closer to railroad tracks than this property that, that 7225 Bradburn. So, and as was pointed out already, I'm sure there are a lot of mitigation techniques that can be done to lessen the noise. I think that as far as crime, I, I think what is, would be a deterrent to crime would be to have something new go in there where people can live. I think the street lamps, by the way, thank you very much for installing those great-looking street lamps along Bradburn Boulevard. I think they, that will be a help to deter crime as well. It is primary, primarily a residential area. We've got probably a lot more residences than we do the businesses other than the automotive place, now the little, the fitness center there. But other than that, primarily, it is residential in that area. And we need places for people to live. Thank you.
Ms. Bishop, just to clarification, Ms. Reddy, as you indicated, we have approved the funds for the quiet zones, which is a big part of that entire area. Even though we can't take that into consideration as part of this hearing, that is funded, but we are at the mercy of Burlington Northern on how soon that happens. That's not a city project, but we are required through the Burlington Northern and Federal Rail Authority, we couldn't take those crossings one at a time because of the proximity. We were required to pay for all four of those, which Burlington Northern will go in and change the equipment, the crossing gates and guards, so that they no longer have to sound whistles as they go through that area. How soon that is going to get done, we don't know and don't have control over. But it is funded, and we are prepared to go forward with Burlington Northern as soon as they put it in their schedule. Okay. Anyone else? I did not have anybody else signed up in the back. If there's someone who wishes to come forward, I do need your, to come forward, give us your name and address. And I will need you to sign up before you come down. Because I do sign up first and then come down, but I still need, for the record, for you to tell us your name and address.
This is going to be unusually short and sweet for me. I'm Debbie Teeter, and I live on Bradburn Boulevard. And I'm here in opposition of the affordable housing located at 7225 Bradburn. I'm not against affordable housing. I just think it's the wrong place for affordable housing. You have a car repair shop. I'm in the auto business. It's noisy. It's stinky. It's loud. There's dangerous items that are available. It's near a railroad track. Your view across the street is a plumbing place. Over to the right, yes, you have a house. And when you talk about a dangerous intersection, you have a dangerous section of street there, of people pulling up that street rather quickly. I see it all the time. I live over there. Yes, I live up the street, but I walked down there. I was at the art gallery for seven years, hearing about economic development. That's what we need in the area. I know it's hard for you to maybe find a way to monitor jobs if you helped a business establish itself there. But business owners there want to grow. They can't grow. There's no parking. There's another resolution that you could possibly do with that land. Give the money back, help make some more parking in that area, and help spur some economic development. Four more houses there are not going to solve our affordable housing problem. There's other areas in Westminster we can put more affordable housing. There's houses there that can be changed. There's land that you can put more affordable housing on. That's just not the right place. Four houses with young kids with a tempting park across a busy street, by a railroad track next to an auto station? Do you want your kids living there? Just because they're affordable doesn't mean they don't deserve the right to have a decent place to live. And to think that they're going to be relegated to that because we need a place to live, oh, it's a $300,000 house. I'll put up with the plumber. I'll put up with Larry's Auto. I'll put up with the homeless that are living under the bridge. The Felteses are having problems with the homeless. They're there 24 hours a day. It's not stopping them from having issues there. So those are really not the answers to that property. I really think if you explored a little bit more, you could find other solutions. But that area right there has been promised economic development, at least since I've lived there, since 1999. The Great Recession was actually over in 2010. It wasn't going on during 2011, after this funding was out there. So where is that economic development? Why do we keep getting a Band-Aid and not an actual development plan, strategic plan that has been told is going to happen in that area? It's a Band-Aid here and a Band-Aid there. And then everybody, gives everybody a high five and said we did something. We put up signs that say Art District. Where's the Art District? And where's the backup for all that? So I really wish you could look into something else with that property and not think that because you can put four houses there, we've solved some big problem, because we haven't. I feel we've just started a new one. Thank you.
Do you have anyone else?
Hi.
You can adjust it up, Mel.
Yes, thank you. Um, I just wanted to ask, before I start with my name?
You still need to give us your name and address?
Oh, yeah, no, I know. I have a question before I give you my name. I have a video of the train noise, which is pertaining to my, to my, I know you can't see the video, but I'd like to play it. It's going to be about 25 seconds.
Once, once you're on your time, we'll let you do it. Once you're on your time, we'll let you do it.
Okay, great. Okay, my name is Jessica True, and I'm going to start by playing a video I took at the intersection. Okay. So I'm a homeowner in this neighborhood, and I'm also a member of the Heart of Westminster Association. I oppose the proposed conversion of the use of funds at this site due to the environmental hazards that could potentially cause asthma, cancer, birth defects, and miscarriages to the people who'd be living there. And that's just, I think we've really lost the thought here, why not, considering these potential effects. I mean, it's, the research that I've done in the last six weeks is really shocking. And I don't think we should forget, here, as we're talking about, you know, what the right thing to do is, what happened in Flint, Michigan. People thought they were doing the right thing there, too. They thought they were saving money by not doing these procedures to these pipes. And children ended up with lead poisoning, lower IQs, and that can't be reversed. And we're talking about the same kind of hazard here. Let me explain to you. The noise from the train crossing nearby is federally mandated to be at least 96 decibels and as high as 110 decibels. The city's own data shows a level of noise at the site falls into the normally unacceptable range per HUD guidelines. On behalf of our neighborhood association, I hired a licensed acoustic engineer. He looked at this study that you had done by Ms. Miniallo, the consulting firm, and he disagreed with her findings. He is an expert witness in this kind of case. He's done 20 of these studies. And he said that this location is in the unacceptable range for noise. The reason they have these ranges is because of the fact that the sound pollution can cause birth defects in pregnant, in the children of pregnant women who are exposed to them. The studies show that high noise exposure to a fetus may be related to hearing deficits, chromosomal abnormalities, elevated cortisol levels, and abnormal social behavior following birth. I also spoke to Corey Whitaker at Denver Habitat for Humanities on October 23rd, and I was told they are not committed to this project, and they do have concerns about the noise. The quiet crossing is not the answer. I spoke to Kathy Norris at the Government Affairs Office for BNSF last week, and she said the fact that the city is proposing a quiet crossing shows that they know the site is too loud for residential building, and the BNSF legal department will likely be contacting the city planner to submit a letter in opposition to housing being built there. Kathy also mentioned that the number of trains and the number of engines can both increase at any time without any notice. An increase in those number of trains or number of engines would cause the site to be in the unacceptable range. Also, the lights that they use for these quiet crossings are extremely bright. And according to researchers, these quiet crossings can pose a serious hazard to children. Can you imagine a mother with children living there with no warning of the trains if she didn't know where her children were at the moment that one passed? According to Operation Lifesaver, every three hours, a person or vehicle is hit by a train. Living near, the second hazard that we haven't talked about yet is diesel emissions. Living near a diesel railroad tracks poses health and safety risks, including asthma. A Mayo Clinic study found that asthma to be 40% to 70% more prevalent in children who live near a railroad intersection. The diesel pollution permeates the air around the trains and the homes in the nearby area and is increased by the long line of cars stopped for a train to pass. In a study in California, those living near railroad stations were found to have a higher risk of cancer. All of these factors that I've listed, proximity, the volume of trains, and rate percentage can increase the risk of cancer. The environmental risks to future potential occupants of this proposed housing are too dire for these families. The greatest risk is to the fetuses, infants, and children. Low-income families deserve a healthy, safe place to live. This is not the location for your project. You need to find somewhere else to build this. And I really ask you, from the bottom of my heart, please vote no to this proposed change of use of funds. We shouldn't lose children's lives or destroy them for financial gain by the city or to make our lives more convenient. Thank you.
Have anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Dino Valenti. I own a business, a home, we have rental property all within the vicinity here. I have previously emailed you my thoughts on this project, and there's a few things I heard tonight that I want to follow up on. Let's talk about vitality of the neighborhood. We're getting ready to enter our 65th year of business. My family has lived in the neighborhood since 1946. The Felteses and the Schofields who were most immediately impacted have been there almost as long. Several other businesses, 40, 50 years. I'd say we're fairly vital, and we are stable, in spite of what the city likes to define us as. Someday, you guys should ask us first. But let's talk about this. This is a dangerous precedent. Mr. DeMott asked the question, have we ever converted funds before in the city? And the answer is no. Let's not set that precedent tonight. You know what? Just admit, this project went south. Your staff changed, you got a mess to clean up from previous staff. You all inherited this. It's now screwed up completely. Give the money back. There's no harm in that. Budgets can be adjusted. Give it back to the federal government. They need it. Let's find the right project. Why do we have blight? Why do we have problems with this parcel? The city acquired it. It was occupied. There were vital businesses there. The city had a different idea, and so they were exited out, and then the property sat and festered, much like the properties on Lowell that are adjacent to us. I can tell you, when there were businesses on Lowell, even though those were disgustingly unattractive properties, we didn't have nearly the problems we do until we got to a point of having dirt again. It has not been fun. The city needs to be a better neighbor to those who own businesses and properties in the vicinity of city-owned properties. And this is not the right way to get there. None of us are against affordable housing. We are against the conversion of these funds for another low-income, federally restricted project in our neighborhood. We're saturated. Let's spread it throughout the city. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Atchison, council, and City Manager Don Tripp. My name is Gary Shea. I live at 3801 West 76th Avenue. I'm here this evening to speak in opposition of the change of use for this piece of property. I know this was advertised, posted as a public hearing. Generally, in a hearing, there's a question and answer period. So I object to that, that this is just comments on my part and limited to only five minutes. I did time the presentation that was done by city staff, who represents the property owner and the developer. They had over 51 minutes of time to present their side of the story. I'm restricted to just five minutes. I'm going to jump around a little bit because quite a few of my neighbors here have covered some of this stuff. The property's always been commercial, and it's had active businesses prior to the city moving forward with acquiring that and trying to do the realignment on Bradburn, which was met with opposition from quite a few of the residents down there. For over 100 years, it's never been housing. Residents knew then, as they knew now, that it's not right to build a home. It's not a good idea to build a home that close to the railroad crossing with a whistled intersection. It's not the location to raise a family, and it'd have no resale value, and it's surrounded by a plumbing contractor, an auto repair garage, and a little Dry Creek drainage, which has become kind of a haven for the homeless now, and actually, no neighbors, too, for the children to play with. So I asked myself, why is the city insisting on making this low-income families live here? So the answer is, is that funds were spent on the property with the intention of making a road alignment. So a property goes from a commercial use to now a road use, which is ideal. Now, because of the situation of those funds being spent and have to be repaid if they don't move forward with the project, now it becomes ideal to be low-income housing, which is not right for our neighborhood. So it's, and it also satisfies the city's strategic goal of providing more affordable housing throughout the city. Unfortunately, it's more affordable housing in southwest Westminster. I think I spoke at city council several months ago, 100% of the affordable housing is currently being built in southwest Westminster. This just adds to that. We asked years ago, when they changed the comprehensive land use plan, that they included throughout the city. They added that wording to the comprehensive land use plan. The city council at that time agreed to it, but unfortunately, and we understand, too, because of the recent study from the people that did the affordable housing thing, too, NIMBY, not-in-my-backyard syndrome, that's what is happening in northwest Westminster. We understand that. But please don't continue to saturate southwest Westminster with more affordable housing. This isn't the right location to do that. That study that they did on the affordable housing, I think it identified, and you'd have to correct me, but over 3,000 acres that are available for development. 3,000 opportunities to provide that affordable housing in better neighborhoods, better locations, rather than right next to these railroad tracks. Jessica did a great job in tracking down some of this information with the sound engineer. By moving those calculations on how you measure from the railroad tracks to the property by just a few degrees, you can reduce that to an unacceptable level by a few tenths. Instead of 75 decibels, it drops down to 74.6, 74.4. Still unreasonable. They provided pictures in their presentation there, that what the current, and they stated that what the property currently looks like. And those were probably taken when the property was first acquired. It doesn't look anything like that now. They did mention that it is boarded up right now, but we've had homeless breaking into it. One of the contractors that's worked in the area dumped a large pile of concrete there. That stayed there for several years, finally got removed, but the property's in bad shape. So it's disappointing that the council would rely on pictures, and overhead pictures here, when only a few of you have been brave enough to come down to southwest Westminster to actually stand on the property and to stand there while a train comes through. So we applaud those. One of the other things that they mentioned, too, is that the HUD guidelines, this affordable housing only satisfies one of those guidelines. They refer to it as a guideline. When we looked at the police substation, in our mind, it satisfied three of those. Now, they also mentioned, too, it's not subject to outside interpretation, but they made a determination of the affordable housing. So somebody has to interpret what the guidelines are. So they were allowed to do that, we're not allowed to do that. Now, in regards to Councilor Seitz's question about the $39,000, the important thing that was admitted in that report is that those funds were erroneously allocated for that Delavilla Park. But if you look back, too, to the beginning of this project, and I realize this tonight, too, CDBG funds can't be used to acquire property if it's done by eminent domain. Well, the city at that time had to know that eminent domain was going to have to be used.
Unfortunately, your time is up, sir.
Okay. We are circulating a petition in opposition to this.
Okay, thank you. Council, opportunity for you to ask other questions. Ms. Pinter?
Yeah, I have a question. There's been a lot mentioned about the trains, and I was rereading the staff report to try to get that. And we asked questions earlier in the evening. I was looking at what's identified in the packet as page 149. It's the question 25 that we had asked leading up to this meeting. Give us an estimate for the timing of quiet zones. And in reading the materials previously provided, it says that the quiet zones will be completed by the second quarter of 2019. Could you talk a little bit more about why you felt confident enough to write down that there will be a quiet zone by the second quarter of 2019?
So that information came from Deborah Basket, our senior mobility planner, who's been working with BNSF. So that is based on her knowledge of the budget being allocated and her anticipated timeframe. As mayor indicated, that's not a guarantee, but that's her information from working with them on when is a reasonable estimate.
And just to be clear, once the quiet zone is implemented, that would mean there would be no more blowing of the whistle. It would just be the passage of trains because they would use a gating system or some other system instead of the horn.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Seitz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have quite a few questions that were sparked by the citizen comment, so I'm going to apologize for jumping around a little bit in advance. Can you go over, I appreciate, I felt Ms. True had a very heartfelt concern about public health and her concern that this site really isn't safe for families that would be living there due to the train noise and due to the pollution to the diesel. At the same time, I know that in the study it said, or in the staff memo, it mentioned that there was an environmental study done. And was that only, did we only use a consultant, or has HUD seen that and it has been approved?
The environmental assessment was completed by a consultant, by an environmental consulting professional. HUD does not approve environmental assessments. They approve the finding, they approve the request for release of funds. The HUD transmits the environmental assessment approval process to the grantee. So they only review the request for release of funds and the finding of no significant impact. Excuse me. In our case, Ms. True objected during the request for release of funds process and finding of no significant impact to HUD on the noise analysis. That objection HUD did review, and we provided HUD with additional noise assessment locations, and they approved that assessment. And had us go back to resubmit the font, sorry, not going to use an acumen, the finding of no significant impact in the request for release of funds, and that was reposted in the Westminster window on December 7th. So we're going through a new process with the new noise assessment locations, and the posting also provided in Spanish.
And can you tell me a little bit more about this consultant that we hired? How did we find her? What were her qualifications? It sounds like there's some concern about, or disagreement on her findings.
Ms. Miniallo has worked in the environmental consulting world for many years. She worked for the city and the county of Denver in doing their environmental assessments for their CDBG program. She has consulted on many CDBG projects and has completed the requisite number of hours of training.
It was also important to note that when we sent information back to the HUD office, it's not just the regular field officer that reviews that. They have a professional within HUD that assesses those and went back and looked at where the noise assessment locations were on the map, verified the readings.
Well, both Region 7, which is not our region, we're in Region 8 of HUD, but Region 7's certifying officer and Region 8's consulted on this noise analysis.
One more question, and it might be easier if you could put the map up again that shows where the spot is. Are there any other homes that currently are within the same proximity to the rail station as the proposed?
To the crossing?
Yeah, to the crossing. Well, to the rail, not station, I'm sorry, to the rail line.
There are two homes, the Feltes property and the Schofield property, that are located in the same proximity of 7225 Bradburn. The Feltes property is to the south, and the Schofield property is to the east of 7225 Bradburn.
What I'm asking specifically, are there homes that are approximately as close to the rail line themselves? Not?
I think the answer might be not necessarily there on Bradburn, but as Ms. Bishop pointed out, there are a number of other properties in that area that back up to the rail. Does that help answer that?
Okay. Yeah, I think that that helps. Okay, so now I am going to jump. Oh, this is, sorry, last one. It sounded to me that there might have been some misunderstanding that the quiet zones were requested for this project, but in fact, we've been working on the quiet zones based off of residents' requests for multiple years. Can you kind of give a timeline of that and why there's been a holdup?
That is accurate, that the timing of the quiet zones isn't connected to this project, but I would defer to, I'm sure if our engineering staff might-
project, but I would defer to, I'm sure if our engineering staff might have a better estimate of when those conversations were initiated. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I know it's been since I've been on council, we've been constantly talking about quiet zones. But I, I guess what I'm asking is for assurance that it's in no way related to this project because we know it's too loud. Am I correct in that assessment? I guess we do know it's loud because we get lots of residents who complain, that's why we want to make it better.
Mr. Ossenberg? Hello, Councilor Seitz. Eric Ossenberg, Business Operations, Manager for Community Development. I was a former project manager for a quiet zone feasibility study, and the one quiet zone that's in the city at 88th Avenue was due to, we had a lot of the conditions in place, relatively low-cost treatment there. As the mayor stated, close coordination is necessary with Burlington Northern and Santa Fe in this case, so quite honestly, it's, it's been a question of resource coordination and in that corridor, when you have the close spacing of the crossings, you have to do them as one project. You can't, because otherwise Burlington Northern won't look at them individually, so it's, it's a larger, larger effort. But as, as was presented in the packet, we're pretty confident in the 2019 timeline provided our partners with Burlington Northern and Santa Fe. Partners.
Mr. Shea made a couple of assertions that I want to just double check. One of the comments that he made was that 100% of the affordable housing or income-restricted housing in Westminster that is being built or that is built is in the southern part of the city. Is that correct? And can you detail other projects if they do exist?
So just current projects or ones that we have reviewed in some fashion in the last year. There have been the Panorama Point Senior Affordable Housing Projects, that's roughly 84th and Federal Boulevard, so that would be outside of this area. The downtown is generally not considered part of this, so I would say that the Eaton Street project, as well as, there are others in the pipeline, for example, with George Sherman's project at the Ascent that has 10% dedicated affordable units. We have other projects in the pipeline, I would, I think is the best way to put it, that are further north. The 104th or Church Ranch and Old Wadsworth site, commonly referred to as the Charlie McKay property, that has been acquired by Dominion, which is an affordable housing developer. They are moving forward with their plans. So these aren't necessarily ones that are in construction currently, but it reflects greater dispersion throughout the city in incoming projects.
And then there was also, I guess, some comments about, it sounded like we had interpreted what one of the potential objectives were, but it was my understanding that those were conversations that we had, both with the community, there was a community process and conversations with HUD, specifically with HUD, as to what would meet their objectives. Am I correct in my understanding?
Well, first, I think that there was a claim made that you can meet more than one national objective. Under CDBG guidelines, you can only meet one national objective. There may be ancillary benefits that fall under a second national objective, but when reporting to HUD, you can only report under one national objective. We had extensive conversations with HUD on our workout plan and our proposal, and they concurred that this was a good option. They're not in the business of approving entitlement grantees' plans. Excuse me, that is part of the public, the public process that each grantee goes through. But they, they were in close consultation with us. We also feel that in looking at all of, at all of the other alternatives for this site, that we could not achieve a national objective other than an LMI benefit, low, moderate income benefit. We felt like we could not achieve an urgent need because there was no, it didn't meet the, the multitude of, of criteria for that. And we couldn't meet the other national objective. Thank you, Slumblight, because you still need to meet a final objective on the final use of the site. Does that answer your question? Okay.
The last thing I want to say, your mic's off. The last thing I want to say in this is really more of our comment is, I feel if a city acquires a property, we should maintain it, and we should be a good neighbor. And I, I have to say, I don't like to be part of deteriorating conditions in a part of town that we have put a lot of energy into wanting to revitalize. So I hope that in the future, if we are to acquire properties, we make sure that we have some revenue stream to maintain them. So that's just a comment.
Mr. Camara?
Thank you, Ms.
If you would hold for a minute. Guys, we've been sitting here for a while. You will allow us, we're going to take a short bio break, about five minutes, and then we'll ask everybody. Counsel, please do not engage in conversations other than here at the dais, but we are still Okay, you guys ready? All right. City Clerk, if you would, put us back on the record. Mr. Camara, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Attorney Frankel, would you mind, Mr. Shea asked, or made a comment about why we have five minutes? And I know this is something we discussed upstairs. Could you please talk about why today five minutes?
Sure. The HUD requirements for a change-of-use decision are that citizens be provided notice and, and an opportunity to be heard. And my understanding is that we published a notice, we accepted written comments for 30 days, we then extended the deadline so that we could accept more written comments. We then notified folks of the upcoming meeting and invited emails and correspondence relative to this decision, all of which were included in the packet of the study session a week ago. So people have had an opportunity to provide all of their comments in writing on multiple occasions, and the public comment period that would have otherwise been available at the beginning of the meeting was simply shifted to Item 10C so that it would be part of the record with the presentation that was going to be made. So my understanding is the arrangements that we've made more than satisfy the HUD requirements that citizens have an opportunity to provide input and be heard on this decision.
So if I understand you correctly and based on our conversation upstairs, is that this is not a typical hearing because it's a hot hearing? And because of that, it was, we utilized a typical five minutes versus open-ended minutes? Is that correct, or?
Correct, yeah. So HUD change-of-use, it's really, it's a, it's a meeting at which public has an opportunity to be heard. And we've done so, both in writing and by providing five minutes of comment.
Thank you. I just wanted to get clarification on that. And I just have a question. So, so I'm struggling a bit with this, because on one hand, I agree with Ms. Bishop. I think we need to make sure we have a diversity of housing stock. And I think this housing project is different than, than any of, of the affordable housing projects that I think we've approved, at least during my time on council, because it's, it's for, to own. Most of the ones that we've been approving recently have been rental properties. But where I struggle is, going back to Ms. Teeter's comments, is, is this the best place to have this housing project? And could you please talk to me a little bit about, if we put this housing there, how will this encourage economic development around that area? Because I worry about that area and adding housing and, especially where it's located.
Counselor, I think there, excuse me, are a couple ways to answer that question. One is having new investment in the area sends a signal to the marketplace that this is an area where additional investment is warranted. That'd be the first thing I would say. The second is adding additional residents. Those would be shoppers to that area who would consume local services and support local businesses would be a second reason that this would contribute to development in the area. And then, thirdly, I think based on some of the testimony you've heard tonight, this is a site that is in poor condition, and changing the status of that property would certainly, I think, add to the aesthetic condition of the neighborhood.
And, and I know you've said this in the, in the staff report, but, but in your professional experience, you believe that having housing here is best than having, and I know there's a concern over CDBG funds and utilizing them for having a business or anything like that, but ignore that, that, let's take for a second aside the CDBG fund requirements. Do you believe that this site, it's, will be better utilized by having housing versus having some sort of business in there?
I think that's a much larger analysis. The challenge right now is that it's difficult to grow business activity in that area simply based on the market support that potential businesses perceive to exist, or, or a limited amount of market support that, that a potential business perceives to exist in that area. So I think you can certainly see by development patterns in that area that new businesses have tended to drift either to the Sheridan corridor or to the Federal Boulevard corridor, where they can rely more strongly on drive-by traffic and, and that kind of thing. So it's, it's a challenge. That, that area is going to take some time to develop new businesses and new opportunities.
Thank you. Those are all the questions I have.
Okay. Ms. Gully?
Okay. First of all, I just want to thank everyone who came out tonight to voice their opinions and their concerns and their ideas on this project. I, as Councilor Decampra, am very conflicted on this issue, and I've tried to listen to all sides, from the staff, who's done a wonderful job of researching and helping us to understand the issue, to the people who live in the area and their feelings about what's going to happen to that area. So please understand that nothing here tonight is taken lightly. It is all very much internalized and processed. My questions kind of jump around. So, my first one is, and I'm not sure we can answer it, but I'm going to ask it anyway, is do we happen to know what resale values or resale ability is when you build next to a railroad? Do, do houses that are built next to railroads, do they resale well, or are there problems? Or, because there are, there are houses in Westminster I know of that are very close to the railroad. What are their resales like?
So we didn't do specific research on that. However, when we did our small survey of Zillow, market estimates, the one house located closest to the railroad was valued the highest at $375,000.
And then, do, and this is another question I'm not sure we can answer, but how many trains go through that area in a day? Do they stop and idle? Do we have any kind of research on that? What, what is the, what is the behavior of the train activity in that area? I guess is what I'm looking for.
We'll let engineering staff answer that.
Thank you.
There was a, Seth Blassey, so there was a development around, I was to the same question, reached out to BNSF, and they asked me about the trains.
Do you know if they stop and idle? Or do they just pass through, like? Like some trains stop because they have to refill, refuel, or they have a loading or, like I know up at the 112th, sometimes those trains stop right before the railroad crossing. I don't, I don't know what they're doing because I'm not an engineer, but they stop and they stop for a period of time because the traffic keeps going through. So I was just curious, do we know if they stop in that area?
So I've been project manager for the Westminster Station Infrastructure, so I've been down there quite a bit, but I've never seen a VNSF train idle in that area.
And then my final question is that, I know we have a lot of affordable housing projects planned for the city. We have a number of them. Do we know how many, how many families or how many, how many, yeah, families? Are we estimating that we are going to provide affordable housing for total? What, what is our plan as a city? I'm new, so I don't actually know that. So I'm going to ask it.
So Counselor Scully, we'll, we'll be glad to go into that in, in greater detail in, in another presentation. But to give you a rough number to, to grab on here, looking back over the projects that have been approved or constructed or are somewhere in the development process over the last two-year period, we are looking at roughly 600 units of housing. So you could translate that to, to families if you like. And that is across the city. That includes projects that are not yet built, but that are in the entitlement process.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Demont.
First question I have is around the fact that if you were to return the funds according to the memo that we were given, we still own the property. Right. So I mean, the question that Mayor Proten, the camera asks, I think is really relevant because we do own that property and that would, you know, I know that I'm a big believer in the market. So the market would control what it, would be able to do with it depending on what somebody wanted to invest. If I'm not wrong, then we own the property, we're going to be able to.
It's correct that it is city-owned property.
So I mean, it's not like we totally would lose out against it. And we still have the downed property, making money. There'll be things that I, I want to ask is, because all this process, part of it is the public comment, so between the meetings that you had, discuss this to tonight, emails that you got, do you have an idea where you should chat, track your signal, possibly maybe, how do you, should we, obviously, have a look?
So I think when I think about this project, I look at it, at all of our public processes with the CDBG program stemming back from the consolidated plan, which drove our five-year process that we're currently in. So taking a step back to that point in time, we had a survey that we put out during the consolidated plan process for residents to prioritize the use of CDBG funds. Excuse me, I'm getting over a cold, so bear with me. During that process, we had public comments in, in both, in writing through the, through the survey, as well as at a couple of community meetings. And respondents who attended the community meetings rated as a high priority affordable housing and increasing homeownership priority for CDBG funds. Excuse me while I go through my notes. One comment that we received in writing on the survey was that this respondent would like to use funds to improve homeownership, homeownership, inspect single-family rental properties and in the poorest area. Yes. Yes. For the consolidated plan process. When asked to please rate the following housing and homeless needs in your neighborhood, a person wrote in, more available funds and programs for home purchase programs and CDBG funds should be used to stabilize homeownership in South Westminster. That was two separate respondents. Another respondent said, we need investment in housing, childcare program for kids, job creation and training in transportation. Finally, another respondent stated that the southern part of the city needs more homeownership. So that, that was part of our consolidated plan process. In terms of this public process, we received 21 comments from residents. Eighteen of those respondents did not support the proposed use. Three of those 18 did not live in the neighborhood. One lived on West 107th Drive, one on West 87th Place, and one on West 94th Place. Three respondents provided letters of support. One lived in the neighborhood and spoke tonight. One lived just outside the neighborhood on King Street. And one provided comment without an address. Um, may I? With all due respect, this has been a process since 2016 we've been going through. We've provided two information-only staff memos to the city council over years, period of time. We worked closely with our HUD representatives, starting back in 2016 on this process. We went through an extensive monitoring with HUD over the summer. And all of those processes culminated in this, this public hearing this evening.
Other comments from council? Mr. Tripp? Mr. Shea? Our public comment period is not open again.
Mr. Mayor, could I have 15 seconds to correct some information?
No, sir. Please sit in.
Thank you.
Mr. Tripp?
I want to make just a concluding comment, I think on, on behalf of the staff. This Brad, Bradburn Boulevard realignment project is the foundation of what we're talking about tonight. And we can't execute on that. We can't recommend to you that that project be built. I want to put that out there as really a foundational issue here tonight. It's too much money. It doesn't achieve enough value for the amount of money involved, and it goes across land that we don't own and would have a difficult time getting. So if you come to that conclusion and we can't proceed with that, and then you begin to factor in the reality of, yes, we did spend some money related to that project, the staff has stepped back for the last months, several months, actually years, and looked at what are some alternatives that could be done here? And so what you have in front of you tonight is the best of those alternatives. It's not something you have to approve. It's not something you have to do. You've got alternatives in front of you here that would give you another opportunity. But I have to tell you that unless we've heard something here tonight that would change the staff's opinion on whether we should proceed because of some safety or public health issue, there have been some things said tonight that are certainly very concerning. But we don't get here to this meeting with a recommendation like this without doing our diligence and understanding to the best of our ability, whether the trains are an issue or public health is an issue or the traffic's an issue. We try to get here tonight in front of you with having vetted all those things. So unless there's something that somebody wants to latch on to, to say that we should change our recommendation here tonight, we're here in front of you because this is the best viable alternative. And it's not only just an alternative, it's an alternative that meets some of your other goals. Now, I don't think the history of where affordable housing's been built in the city is really an issue. It is for the folks that live in historic Westminster. Believe me, I've heard it many, many times. And, and I have to say, in front of these folks here tonight, who I consider to be friends and great citizens of our community, I really, I apologize for disagreeing with you, but I disagree with you. I think that we've brought forward something that is a good idea on a piece of land that can't be used for the purpose it was intended. And we've brought to you an alternative that's viable. Now, I will tell you this, if you don't want to do that and you want to stop this project here and pay the funds back, we'll proceed to do that. And then we'll try to do something viable with the land. But I don't want there to be any unrealistic expectations that there are people waiting in the wings to do something else commercially with this property. I mean, we have a lot of needs. Counselor Decampra asked a question earlier, which I thought was a great question. We'll go back and research. What, what lands do we own and what status are we with those lands? I know that we own 73rd and Lowell. I know we have several pieces of parkland. I know that we also have a train station that we're investing pretty mightily in. And I think we're hoping between the train station, the things that are happening on Federal Boulevard and on the west end at Sheridan, with, with the Holmes area, the Schoenberg Farms area, you know, we're starting to see some momentum build in that community. But it's not enough. It's Johnny-come-lately for a lot of people sitting here in this room. And, you know, I go to the meetings and I sit with the folks that are sitting here in this room, and they don't trust that we're going to get this done. And the best that I can tell them is that we're really trying hard. We've assigned outstanding staff to this. We're looking for alternatives to try to get some momentum going. And I know that it doesn't sound like much to put four houses into a, into a community that it's going to drive so much commerce, all of a sudden the dam's going to break and we're going to have a flood of economic development activity, but it's a start. And for those of us that are familiar with Habitat for Humanity, when I heard about it, I jumped. I was, I was ecstatic. I thought this is a great sort of a business partner that we'd like to see develop. Somebody said to me, why here? Why not elsewhere? And I say, yes, elsewhere. Let's do more of this. If we get Habitat into our community, let's build them all over the community. And I can tell you this, you've been very clear through what you've said to us and our consultants have said the same thing, build the affordable housing throughout this city. And we're committed to that. So council, we'll, we'll, I'm not trying to put pressure on you at all. I'm trying to tell you that we'll support whatever you want to do, but I want to, I want to stand behind the recommendation that's here in front of you tonight. And it's, it wasn't made without great concern and consideration by people who are really good at what they do. And, and I trust and respect that. But they will trust and respect that you're the policymakers. And we'll take whatever you decide and we'll do the best we can to, to move these folks' goals and our goals for South Westminster forward.
Ms. Pencher.
Yeah. Thank you so much. And I, I think your comments are right, that the people who are here, you describe them as friends and great citizens, and I think that that's really true. You also made a comment, Mr. Tripp, that people don't trust that we're going to get this done. I think that people might trust, based on the ton of their comments, that we would build affordable housing. I think what they're having some concern with is that there will be a secondary follow-up, a concurrent follow-up, a commitment to economic development, to vitality, to commitment to the arts. And what I'd really like to hear from you, more specifically or possibly staff, is to speak to that because there is the question of this project and, but it's not in a vacuum. I mean, I, I would like to hear from you, your perspective, and it's, I think it's a really valid concern. It's been a lot of years about economic vitality and development along 73rd and in historic Westminster generally.
Mr. Hall?
Mayor and council, I, you know, I find myself not disagreeing with many of the comments from the neighborhood around those issues, around the absence of a cohesive plan to move the economic vitality of 73rd Avenue, Harris Park, in the southern part of the city forward. I think we're making progress on that, but I think it's been, in some areas, far too haphazard. Staff, the economic development staff has been working on a draft revitalization plan, an outreach strategy, a marketing and branding strategy, so that we can approach this from a holistic perspective. And council has been very supportive in committing additional staff, staff resources to allow us to engage in those activities. So that's something we're very much looking forward to in economic development. Quite frankly, in, in this circumstance, we found ourselves with a very limited timeframe in which to make the best recommendation to you that we possibly could, given the facts in front of us. And that's what you have before you tonight. So as, as the city manager, as Don said, we are going to support whatever decision is made. We have evaluated this, this particular site, this project, the set of circumstances, the funds, dealt with HUD, and we have put forth our best recommendation. So with that, you know, we look forward to moving forward.
So?
I apologize for belaboring the issue, but I want to just quickly follow up. Do you feel that this is a step forward in a cohesive plan, in a strategic plan to revitalize Harris Park and historic Westminster? Or is this a one-off that doesn't fit into that plan? You know, I think, I think Ms. Teeter mentioned, you know, this is a Band-Aid. Band-Aids here and there. What we need are real solutions and economic investment. And, and I don't disagree with her. And so I guess what would give me more confidence is feeling like this is a piece, one piece, but that it helps build something bigger that allows this community to revitalize while keeping their identity.
So I, I think that this project, in addition to meeting, to meeting the requirements of a HUD change of use, addresses a critical council goal that we've been working on for the past couple of years. In particular, what's unique about this is it provides for sale housing in the neighborhood. I would be, I, I think, less enthusiastic if this were rental housing, for example. I think it provides a real opportunity in this particular case for, to address an affordable housing need that we have, not only in this area, but citywide. And I hope that it serves as a model as we move forward. I think it is one small step in a cohesive strategy as we move forward. Can I give you all of the details of that cohesive strategy tonight? No. But we look forward to working on that and bringing it back to you. But I do think that this is a step in the right direction.
I, I don't want to belabor on my comment earlier, but I feel like we build credibility. When we invested in this property, the way we treated it communicated something to the neighbors. And I think in this instance, it communicated that we didn't value their neighborhood how we should have. And so I think it's always easier to maintain trust and to rebuild it, but I do think that we should take extra effort for the other properties that we own at this point to really make sure that we are good neighbors and we're setting the example. Because I think, once you have a deficit of trust, it's hard to build back, so.
Mr. Tripp or Mr. Hall?
If, if I could, just, just an additional comment to that point. We completely understand that this is about building relationships. That's what about, this process is all about. It takes physical form at the end of the day, but ultimately, this is about building relationships within, among, between the residents, the city, the neighborhoods. And so we're committed to that process.
Anything else? Council? One last time. Anybody else got anything else?
So I also wanted to thank the citizens who came to speak tonight. And I hope you hear from us. We've listened to everything that you've said and we don't disagree. You know, the thing that's interesting about any community is there are so many different needs and.
And I have to say, I've been on council for two years, and I know we have issues of people not having enough affordable places to live. We have issues with economic development in different parts of our city, and a great desire to move all of these issues forward. I guess from my perspective, after listening to what everybody has said, and really reading thoroughly the research in the packet, and reading citizen comment, I don't think that these, this project is something mutually exclusive to the economic and revitalization goals we have. And it seems like that there's some thinking there that if somehow this project were to go forward, that that means that we're not focused on economic development or revitalization. And I don't see the two as mutually exclusive. I see them, I see this as something definitely supportive of that. So, I don't know. Housing, the lack of people having choices is not a theoretical problem. This is a crisis in our city. In 2016, 64% of the citizens who live in the Westminster Public School District told us that providing more options for people of all income levels to find housing was either a high or highest priority for city and city council. And with that information in mind, I know that that has guided so much of us, and not just a survey, but our conversations. So, you know, I go out a lot, and I knock on doors a lot, talking to lots of citizens. And the conversations I have with these citizens inform every vote that I take up here. And I just want to tell you about a conversation I had with a lady who's lived in our city for 30 years. In fact, she's a teacher in the Westminster Public School District. She was getting a divorce. She had lived in her city, or her city, her house, for 30 years. This is just a couple blocks over from City Hall over here. She and her husband were getting a divorce, and they were selling their house. She didn't make enough money to buy her husband out of his share of the house to be able to stay in the home that they raised their family in. She was being forced to leave the city. She couldn't afford to stay here in Westminster, and it broke her heart. And, you know, that means something to me. I grew up this way. If I hadn't had my grandmother, we didn't have a city that cared about our citizens and single moms who were out there working hard. My mom was a clerk in an insurance company, worked hard every single day trying to raise two little girls. And had we not had my grandmother, we would have, I don't know what we would have done. But I'm grateful. I'm glad that our city took an opportunity. We have a parcel of land here that, I don't know, for better or worse, didn't work out for a street realignment. And you see that we have a crisis in our city. People can't afford places to live. And you found a way to turn that around into an opportunity. So I look at this as four more people who now, or four more families, who now have an opportunity to invest in something. You know, purchasing a home, that's, for most Americans, that's your principal opportunity for wealth creation. My mom finally was able to purchase a house when I was 19 years old. So, you know, that's just not, that's not right. You know, she worked hard every day of her life. And how many more of those people in our community are in that same situation? So how refreshing that we have a proposal before us for four more families who can buy, who, it's not a rental property or project, it's a for-sale opportunity where four more families can be investors in Westminster. They can be contributors, and they can be concerned and add to the long-term success of our city. To me, that's win-win. So I appreciate the work that staff has done. Thank you. And to our citizens who might not be on this same page, please know, we're not, this isn't mutually exclusive. We are concerned for all of our community and for economic development throughout and revitalization. So thank you for being here tonight and for letting me have my turn.
Mr. Delock?
Thank you. I want to also thank the citizens for coming out and voicing your opinion between this and the many different emails that we had in our packet, as well as the different meetings that they had on the CDBG funds project. I want to thank staff for trying to come up with a good solution that was a positive thing. I like everything that I've heard from you tonight as far as what efforts you think you need to take to meet some of the challenges that have been brought to us by the citizens of the city. However, I don't feel that this is the right project for the right folks, so I cannot support it. But I look forward to us doing similar projects in other places that I feel have been. Thank you.
Other comments from council? I think we've heard, we've heard a lot of information. Some of us have been pushing these issues of affordable housing, redevelopment, new development. As Ms. Byrd and Ms. Bishop have both indicated, our stock of affordable housing is pretty well none. But with what we've got today started, what we've got in the pipeline, we're starting to develop that, and we're developing it in many parts of the city. And our goal is to continue to do that. But one of the things that people look at when they do investment, as Mr. Hall talked about, is they're looking for the shoppers, the customers. They're looking for people who are going to live near those businesses, that will be the people that keep their doors open. If we don't have a viable rooftop community, business won't consider coming here. And our goal is to try to make sure that every part of the city has a viable opportunity to have that entrepreneur open up a business, as just as we saw this past Saturday. Brand-new coffee shop, a train store that works part-time, the flag company at 73rd and Brad, been there for a number of years. But people have to have customers. And if they can't attract people to come into that community, that's where we're going to have the least amount of effort put into keeping those businesses open. The development that we're doing around the TOD station is a start. We already have other contracts come in looking at purchasing land. Some of it's been made very public already. German Associates have picked up a big piece of it at 71st and Federal. But you can't look at just one small piece. You have to look at the entire area, because what are we trying to do with the area? And I don't agree or disagree that we've made the right decision. We've made the best decision based upon the knowledge we have, what we have in front of us. Now, if we take the housing piece off, do we think we're going to get commercial in there? Unfortunately, I don't think we are. Because the attraction for commercial would have already come in there before we tried to convert that if it was there. We have a reluctance of people coming in, making large investments in commercial until they are convinced, as Mr. Hall said, that there's a viable opportunity there for them to be successful. We've got to continue to work to change their mindset. We need to encourage them that this part of the city, as well as any part of Westminster, is a viable opportunity to invest in for the future of our community. Some of it's going to be more of a challenge than others. But we've got an opportunity today. Is it going to fix all the housing problems? No. But it is a start. Will it fix all of our business problems? Nope. But it's a start. So whether we go forward and we say this project's got to go away, and we return those CDBG funds, my concern is if we return them, how will HUD look at the next time we apply for them? If we say we can't meet the requirements once you give us the money, what's their reason for giving us money the second time? My background, I've got a lot of experience in dealing with federal funding. If you return money, you don't get much of a consideration for getting that kind of money back in the future, because they find somebody else who has more of a need and has an ability to be able to put that money where they say they're going to put it. Now, the council, before this one, before the past one, made a decision not to fund a roadway project for several years. With the downturn in the economy and whatever, because of the cost, they didn't have $2 million or $3 million to put into that project and get the return on the investment. So that's one reason it languished. The safety issues that were brought up could not be documented and supported. So we have a lot of information that this has been occurring over a good number of years. But we still have to make a decision tonight, one way or the other. Right now, on the table, we have a motion and a second to move forward with this. So by a vote of your lights, which we'll get to, so I can get out of this. What I will ask you to do, the vote is to support the realignment project being changed and a reapplication for reallocation of funding to HUD. A positive vote supports the staff recommendation. A negative vote says you do not want to support the staff recommendation. If that is not supported, then we'll have to deal with the other pieces coming behind it separately. So at this point, I would ask you to cast your ballot. This is not a roll call vote. And then we will see where the votes come out. Again, yes, you're supporting the staff recommendation, no, you're not. Present time, I have six votes in favor of the staff recommendation. I have one vote opposed. At this point, the motion carries. At this point, we need to move on to part C2 and C3. So if I have a motion on C2. Ms. Byrd?
I move to approve the reallocation of $625,000 of budget from the General Fund Central Charges account, transfers to Westminster Economic Development Authority, to the Professional Services account in the amount of $245,460 for the repayment of the Department of Housing and Urban Development funds, and the remaining $379,540 to the contingency account.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, we will vote with your lights. Again, the motion passes on a 6-1 vote. Ms. Byrd, would you continue with C3, please?
I move to authorize the repayment of housing and urban development for Community Development Block Grant Funds in the amount of $245,460 from the General Fund Central Charges Professional Services account for the 7225 Bradburn Boulevard site.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, vote with your lights. All those opposed, also vote with your light. Again, the motion carries on a 6-1 vote. Ladies and gentlemen, that finishes the council agenda for tonight. We are adjourned.
Mayor, I mentioned earlier in the evening that we had a study session next week. We actually have a full council meeting. I'd like to correct the record on that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tripp. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're done.